Now, I'd like to call to order the September 19, 2018, formal council meeting. Will you please call the roll?
Councilman DeCecio. Councilwoman Guevara. Councilwoman Mendoza. Councilwoman Noakowski. Councilwoman Pastor. Councilwoman Stark. Vice Mayor Waring. Mayor Williams.
Here. Today, we have an interpreter. Would you like to introduce yourself, please?
Buenas tardes. Si alguien necesita los servicios de interpretación al español, se les puede proporcionar el equipo atrás. Gracias.
Thank you. Citizens comments. We had a special request, a special guest today. Tristan and Graham Schaub. Would you like to come down and speak for three minutes?
Good afternoon, council. My name is Tristan Schaub, and I'm the vice president of the Arcadia Camelback Mountain Neighborhood Association. You can come up, honey. First, I wanted to say thank you. Thank you for approving the 56th Street Maricopa Association of Governments grant that's now been funded and is underway. It's going to make the five schools in the Arcadia area much more accessible and a complete street for that neighborhood. Our streets and street safety are important to me. My son and I, Graham, we like cars, we like bikes, scooters and skateboards. What we don't find ourselves using though much is the light rail. Only about 1% of Phoenicians utilize light rail. And we do appreciate and support the forward-thinking goals of T-2050, Complete Streets, and the Bike Master Plan. But all of these goals are only achievable because we have streets. Streets brought us here today. Streets will take us home tonight. Light rail passengers utilize streets to get to the stations. Streets are how building materials move about our cities, and streets allow us to move freely on our own schedules. Council members, our streets are eroding, and they need repair, and they need our light rail funds to do so. Thank you. Thank you for evaluating the repurposing of the light rail funds to meet today's transportation needs. I'm going to introduce my son, Graham.
Hello, council members. My name is Graham Schaub. Please spend money on our streets. We need streets today, and we need streets in the future. T-2050 means that I'll be driving Phoenix's streets when I'm 39. Trains take certain people to certain places. Streets take everybody pretty much anywhere in Phoenix. Please improve our streets.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you. Thank you both very much.
Mayor?
Oh, I believe Councilman DeCecio is on the phone. Is that correct?
Yes, thank you. I did not know Tristan was going to be here. Tristan, thank you for everything you do. Graham, thank you for coming today. I wanted to make sure that this council as a whole thanks you. It's very difficult to do what you did, and you are admirable, and you did an excellent job, and we're very proud of you. And I'm sure your parents are very, very proud of all the work that you do out there, Graham.
Thank you for saying that. He deserves very much. Andy Zane will be followed by Charles Kwan.
Good afternoon. My name is Andy Zane. I have a citizen petition to the mayor and the city council of Phoenix. It's a petition to investigate the influence of campaign contributions to Kate Gallego on City of Phoenix decisions regarding the Chinese Cultural Center. Whereas, the Chinese Cultural Center garden has been an invaluable asset to the City of Phoenix for decades, but has now been threatened with disfigurement and elimination since July 2017 due to the expressed intentions of True North Companies, its subsidiary 660 North LLC, and CEO David Tedesco Hiddell. Whereas, since August 2017, the entire Chinese-American community in metropolitan Phoenix has vigorously opposed what is viewed as the destruction of the unique and irreplaceable hallmark of an ancient heritage. Whereas, the leadership of our community has been unable to meet with Councilwoman Kate Gallego in whose district the Chinese Cultural Center is located. Whereas, public records show that Councilwoman Gallego has accepted substantial campaign contributions from True North and 660 North LLC executives. David Tedesco, his wife, and his business associates have contributed the maximum permissible donations to Councilwoman Gallego. In late 2017 and early 2018, contributions to Councilwoman Gallego by True North Companies and 660 North LLC known executives and their spouses totaled more than $75,000. In addition, David Tedesco also donated $10,000 to a political committee that appears to be founded by Kate Gallego, as suggested in their social media post. And, believe it or not, the name of the political committee is outlawed dirty money. And Kate Gallego, as one of the politicians who launched the initiatives to keep the dirty money out of elections, is supposedly an outlawed dirty money advocate. Whereas, public records also show none of the executive members from True North or 660 North LLC had ever made any campaign contributions to Phoenix council members or major candidates prior to year 2017. However, True North CEO David Tedesco and other executives started donating maximum money permissible to Kate Gallego after the Chinese Cultural Center situation started. Citizens from the metropolitan Phoenix are all asking this question. Why did Ms. Gallego suddenly become the Scottsdale-based venture capital firm's most favorite politician?
I need you to wrap up, please.
Therefore, pursuant to Chapter 4, Section 22 of the city charter, I, Andy Zane, as a citizen and resident of City of Phoenix, petition the city council to investigate one, all donations made to Councilwoman Kate Gallego by True North Companies, 660 North LLC, and any other subsidiaries or affiliates. Number two, all communications regarding the Chinese Cultural Center between any city official, including Councilwoman Kate Gallego and True North Companies.
You can hand that petition in, and we will be event coffee. Thank you very much. Charles Kwan?
Before I talk, let me hand these to you, so you will be able to read.
Okay, you will have three minutes.
Yeah, honorable council members. In the past 10 months, as the councilwoman Kate Gallego took over $75,000 of dirty money from True North executives and their relatives. During that same period, with her influence, the City of Phoenix has been sided with True North's effort to demolish the Phoenix Chinese Cultural Center. Dirty money and influences, is it right? Is it legal? And any other politicians also took dirty money? As evidence for dirty money, some of the donors wouldn't even put down their association with the True North Company in the information, you know, column. It is time for the city council to investigate, to clear member from Kate's dirty money. It is time for the city council to side with ordinary citizens to protect art, cultural diversity, and the interests of small businesses instead of large firm. It is time for the city council to do the right thing and stay away from dirty money. It is time for the city council to act to rebuild the trust damaged by Kate's dirty money. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Shin, I'm going to, S-H-I-G-I, sorry. Be followed by Lyndon Clark.
Thank you, members of the city council, for taking the time to listen to what we have to say here today. We've been coming to this council for probably close to a year now, actually, September 12th. And we are kind of wondering if we need to question this whole process because of what happened with Ms. Gallegos. Taking campaign funds from the person we have an issue with, it makes us wonder if, has this been impartial in any way, shape, or form? We've had great expenses in terms of legal fees, a lot of time spent in court, and we don't know if this is impartial at this point. What can we believe? What if Kate Gallegos actually wins and becomes the mayor? What happens to this process at that point? Are we going to get a fair shake, a fair hearing? By the time she had this money donated to her campaign, the permit for the roof, preserving the roof of the Chinese Cultural Center was renewed for two years, for a year, instead of six months, which is what it was initially granted for. So, did that have anything to do with the granting of the permit? Why is the fence up there anyway? There's nothing happening at the Cultural Center. It should be taken down. It's just preventing the Chinese-American community from enjoying what we have in Phoenix. And hopefully, this beautiful place, the Chinese Community Center, will continue to stand. We need your help, and we're here protesting the campaign donations to Ms. Gallegos. It just doesn't look right. It needs to be checked out. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Lyndon Clark, followed by Greta Rogers.
Thank you, mayor and council members. And I echo the same concerns about former council lady Kate Gallego. But I would also like, in fairness, to make sure that Daniel Valenzuela, that we check into his financial campaign records. This is not about Democrats or Republicans. It's about dirty money. And we need to know that our public officials, although, you know, you're within your right to take donations when you are voting on crucial things such as destroying the cultural history of our beautiful Chinese-American brothers and sisters, that you are not receiving corporate campaign donations, as allegedly described here by Kate Gallego. So, I appreciate the right that I have to speak here. In many countries, I would be thrown in jail or not even allowed to get to this point. But we'll see what happens to us as we continue to complain, as our country continues to lose its constitutional rights, one by one. Please do something about this. It may be legal, but it is not ethical, and it is not right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. And I'm speaking from here because my agility has diminished. I'm officially an old lady, and will begin 90 next month.
Well, congratulations.
I athird the comments made to you with regard to the Chinese Cultural Center and Kate Gallegos questionable donations. Get on it and get on it like rats to cheese, because that's what it smells like. What I want to make comment about are two items that I think we have not kept up with as now we're in the last quarter of the 18th year in the 21st century. Council attendance is accepted in presence only. Council attendance by phone is not acceptable. Why? Because the man who represents the district I live in, but he no more represents me than a crook does, is sitting at home, probably in his boxers, on the phone. People who can't get to the meeting do not comment and do not vote. You address this, and you make the change to the charter, if that's where it's necessary, or within other documents as needed. Second, liquor licenses. In today's agenda, they begin on page 17 and end on page 68. I have said this before, and I urge you with all seriousness to consider putting liquor licenses on a once-a-month schedule only for liquor licenses and take them up at a regular time that the people know about who are interested and have to come here vis-à-vis liquor licenses. Most of the people in this room today don't give a patoot about liquor licenses. They're not involved with them. I'm not opposed to them, but we don't need to waste time, sometimes two hours. I've been to these meetings for 22 years, to take up liquor licenses. Do them at a separate time, publicly noticed, and the same day of the month, and time of beginning every month. Thank you.
Thank you. I have one more card. Ed, A-B-U, okay. It must be U-D. Oh.
I have some handouts, please. Thank you. Good afternoon, council. My name is Ed Abud, A-B-O-U-D. I live at 3939 East Glen Rosa, Phoenix, Arizona 85018. Born and raised in the same house I live in today. I've got a petition for the council. In March 2018, my neighbor and I got involved in conversations with planning and zoning department when an elderly neighbor was being taken advantage of by a developer who was building a house next door to the property that the elderly woman lives in for 62 years. The project of 3818 East Glen Rosa drew attention when the developer removed a wall that had been erected by the original property owner 30 years ago. The developer replaced the original wall with a new wall located that was never used as a property line in the past. The developer did not get permission from the elderly neighbor and encroached onto her property. I believe this is an elder abuse case because they had stole her property. She's not well. She does dialysis three times a week. I have her daughter that does live with her talk to her as well. The developer had taken, excuse me. Oh, the developer had taken advantage of a defenseless person who, because of her health reasons, could not complain to the city hall, who would be protecting her. On the reverse side of this petition is a short list of violations and experiences that were set in motion by this defective site plan approved by the planning and zoning department in October of 2017, when the construction permit was issued for 3818 East Glen Rosa. Since becoming involved, I learned that the violation, violations of building codes by developer is normal in this area and city. Planning and zoning departments condones and allows it to happen on purpose of either neglect or violations in some special builders or developers. Violations happen without citations, fines, or penalties, or corrections. I'm petitioning the mayor and the city council and the commission to an independent agency to investigate the construction of 3818 East Glen Rosa to determine what planning and zoning department failed to do in this case and others in the same area of the town. I want this investigation recommendations of planning and zoning department so they will improve their procedures. They are, they should, supposed to be impartial and supposed to be enforcing the codes that protect the quality of the building and the property rights of residents throughout the city. I feel like this investigation to the public process would getting involved, input neighbors in the area. I'm also requesting a refund of $1,000 that I spent on a survey to prove that the developer's survey and site plan were incorrect that the city accepted. The city staff, the city staff disrespected and belittled us for using a tape measure.
Thank you.
So, that's why I hired the surveyor. You have a copy. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Luis Acosta? It's the last card I have.
Mayor and council, thank you for our time today. My name is Luis Acosta. I'm a native Phoenician and retired from the City of Phoenix, and I've had an opportunity to drive all 500 square miles of our city when employed. Our streets are falling apart. Water is being wasted on irrigation due to lack of maintenance. I've been sending Ed some of these photos of baseline. And when I drove the city, I saw all these wasted water and our streets and sidewalks falling apart. The city wants to spend $800 million on the light rail to put in nine stations. Nine stations for stops for the light rail and spend nine, 800 million, which I'm sure will go into a billion dollars. They showed the beautification that's going to be done on Central. You can't maintain what we have today, hasn't been maintained in maybe 40 years at any type of serviceable level because there's no budget to maintain landscapes, sidewalks, or streets. However, you want to spend $800 million for nine stations. That's going to benefit supposedly the citizens of Phoenix, which is less than 1%. The other issue is, here are some little bit of history about Phoenix. When you put in the convention center, here's a thing from August 2007 from the Phoenix New Times. The Phoenix City Plaza is a tax rat hole. In 1998 alone, it cost nearly $30 million to operate, and yet only took in a third of that. Bad decision. The hotel that was just sold, look at all the money that was lost. Bad decision, bad investments. Investments don't give us taxpayers nothing. Also, the ballpark, I recall when the ballpark was put in about the White Elephant Garage. $175,000 a month in losses. What is the point? The light rail is going in the same direction for less than 1% of the people. But the people who drive, because this is a car-centric city, are getting nothing. This light rail is a total waste of money. And remember, they showed all these beautiful pictures at all these meetings that Valley Metro's put in, how beautiful these areas are going to look. But you can't maintain weeds, can't maintain the landscape. Water being wasted and flowing into our streets, our most precious resource. It's really unfortunate that because the feds are dangling a carrot of $500 or $600 million of free money, that's a joke, because in the end, we, the taxpayers, are going to foot the bill for this forever and ever, ever, our grandkids, and yet we'll have no streets and no sidewalks. Thank you for our time.
Next, 24-hour paragraph, please.
The titles of the following ordinance and resolution numbers on the agenda were available to the public at least 24 hours prior to this council meeting and therefore may be read by title or agenda item only. Ordinance is number G6503 through 6506, S44984 through 5017, and resolutions 21673 through 21675.
Thank you. Next, of the approval of the meeting minutes, Councilwoman Pastor. Have you had an opportunity to review June 27, 2018 minutes?
Yes, I have. Approval of June 27, 2018 minutes.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. I have reviewed the July 5 minutes and found them to be in order and move their approval.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries.
Move to approve the August 1, 2018, meeting minutes.
Second.
And motion is second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Post. Motion carries. Carried unanimously. Well, I take that back. Did Councilman DeCecio vote? He did.
I did.
Okay, I didn't hear you. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Boards and commissions, do we have?
Move to approve mayor and city council boards and commission nominations.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any comment? Bearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Are we have some people here to be sworn in? All right, I'll move them right over here. Raise your right hand. Raise your right hand. Okay. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona, that I will bear full faith and allegiance to the same and defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic, and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the office of according to the best of my ability, so help me God. Congratulations, lady.
Thank you.
Brings us to liquor license applications. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion?
Move to approve items 5 through 26.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Do we have any cards?
Cards.
Okay. don't, we have no cards. Do I have a motion? I do have a motion. I have a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. You ready, mayor?
I am ready.
I move to approve items 27 through 88, except the following. 28, 34, 35, 53, 56, 57, 60, 64, 68, 69, 70, 71, 73, 75, 76, 77, 87, and 88. And noting that item 73 is being continued to October 3, 2018, so it can be heard by the Citizens Transportation Commission on September 27, 2018. Items 73 and 76 are as corrected. Item 88 is being continued to October 17, 2018, at the request of the resident who submitted the petition.
Okay, we did have one card. I think Walt, he wanted to speak, but did you know it was being forwarded to the CTC?
I still have a comment.
Okay.
You want me to?
Just move 73 out. Hold it. Was that included?
So, I completed the motion.
A second.
Yeah, and we pulled it out, so.
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed you pulling it out.
We pulled it out, so.
Okay. Hold that thought for a minute. Soon as we take this vote, we'll move it up for you.
Okay, thank you.
Any discussion? We have a second? All in favor? We need roll call.
DeCecio?
Yeah.
Guevara?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark? Waring?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes. Can we take that out of order and 73? Do I need a motion?
Can I move item 73? I would like to move item 73.
Out of order.
Out of order.
Do we have a second?
Six.
All right, we have a motion, second. All in favor?
I don't think we have anything.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Item 73 is now before us. Do I have a motion?
Yeah, I would like to move this to, we need to continue it to October 3 so that we can refer it to the Citizens Transportation Commission, which will hear it on September 27, 2018. Sorry.
A second. So, with item 73, I know it's going to the Citizens Transportation Committee. I believe, I would also like in the Citizens Transportation Committee to consider public comments or public outreach the same way we have done with South Central Light Rail.
I would agree with that.
Walt, you may come forward. We have a couple cards on this, but you can only speak on the continuance.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just would like to encourage you to offer some options to the public. In other words, keep it as it is. I think it's 30% streets now and certain other percentages. Maybe increase that to 50%, and then maybe have a third option or a fourth option.
You can only speak to the continuance.
Well, I think it should be continued, but continue maybe longer so that the opportunity to develop options and to get public hearings widely in maybe every district, because this was a vote of the people throughout the city. And this, and now we're going to make a major change, or at least it's proposed, and I think that it should be aired with the entire city in public hearings like we had in South Phoenix.
Thank you. Boy Miller, did you still want to speak? Kristen Schaub? I think he left. And that was Graham. John Severn? You're good? All right. That's all the cards we have. Roll call.
DeCecio? DeCecio?
Yeah. Yeah, sorry.
Guevara? Mendoza?
Yes.
Pastor? Stark? Waring?
Yes.
Williams.
Yes. Okay, takes us back to item 28.
Move to approve item 28.
Second.
Leonard Clark, you put in a card on that?
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Leonard Clark. You know, I'm just wondering, because this is my fault, I didn't have a chance to check with any of your staff. So this is just to protect for hearing loss, because I just want to make sure, because I know that sometimes in certain military bodies, they employ silencers and things like that, and I'm sure that's not what it is, but you know what? I just want to make sure that this purchase you're making is only to be used for preventing hearing loss, which our officers need, of course, but this is in no way or shape or form having to do with anything with silencers, correct, on the weapon? In other words, as used, you know, tactically by military. So thank you very much for letting me speak.
I believe Chief.
Mayor Williams and members of the council, Mr. Clark is correct. The purpose of this tool would allow us to suppress the sound and the muzzle signature that comes out of a weapon when it is fired. What that'll do, it will help to preserve officers' hearing if they are forced to engage in that situation, also allow for increased communication among officers that are in a tactical situation, because there won't be as much sound. It'll allow for the discernment between fire that comes from somebody other than our officers and our officers. That's the purpose.
Thank you. Any further questions? Very none? And a second. So we need roll call.
There you go.
DeCecio? DeCecio? Guevara?
Yeah.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Pastor? Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Williams.
Yes. Next item? 34?
I move item number 34.
Second.
Did you want to make comments, Vice Mayor? Okay. Councilman DeCecio, did you want to make comments?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Roll call.
DeCecio?
No.
Guevara? Mendoza?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark? Waring?
No.
Williams.
Yes. Item 35?
I move item 35.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Councilman DeCecio, did you want to make comments?
Thanks for asking, Mayor, but no.
Okay, roll call, please.
DeCecio?
No.
Guevara? Mendoza?
Yes.
Noah Kous, sorry, Pastor?
Yes.
Stark? Waring? Williams.
Yes. Item 53?
Move to approve item 53.
Second.
Oh, we do have a card, Don Russell.
Got some handouts. Greetings, Mayor and City Council. My name is Don Russell. I live in District 1. Item 53, it's a employee's small loan program. If you haven't had a chance to read it, there's a couple things in here that I would think that would cause you some concern. It says it's here to ease financial stress of our employees with a reasonable interest rate of 24.9%. Does anybody here think that's a reasonable interest rate? Anybody? Please, raise your hand. I don't think it's reasonable, and I don't think it's reasonable you should vote and approve it. I know a lot of city employees that make less than $50,000 a year. They struggle to put food on the table to feed their family, and if they get forced into having one of these loans, it says it's going to get them out of the cycle of debt, it's going to create more debt. These employees have gone nine years without a cost of living increase. Nine years. When you factor in their pay cuts, their concessions, and inflation, they've lost 20% of their buying power. So they're having a hard time, and now the city's going to offer them a loan of 24.9%? That's not even right. Anyway, I would hope that the city could go out and find a better interest rate than that. I know people that offer a 9%. It comes right out of their payroll. There's no, there's no risk at all for the financial company. It comes out before the city employee even has a chance to go decide if he's going to buy food for his family, or if he's, they take the money right off the top. They don't have to repossess his car. It's coming right off the top. It's just, it's almost criminal. I mean, come on, we can come up with a better interest rate for our employees. I know people do it for 9%. That's 15% savings to the employee, right there off the top. So, anyway, thanks for listening.
Thank you. I asked that same question. Is there somebody on staff that could come?
You want to do that?
Yeah.
Mayor, Councilmembers, the Human Resources Director Lori Baze is here. I would just say, this is not the city offering a loan, it's a service. It's a better rate than a credit card and a better rate than title loans. That's what the goal is. Lori can explain more of the process. We can, you also have the opportunity to ask for it to be continued for more research, but I'll let Lori explain.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. To address the question, the interest rate that is being proposed by the vendor is something that would be offered on a voluntary basis. These loans would be available to employees should they select to apply for one, but they also are interest rates that are intended to, or these loans, excuse me, are intended to take the place of a, an employee that may go to a payday lender or a title lender, which have interest rates of approximately 400% on average. We are not expecting all employees to use this loan program. It's really intended for employees who may have poor or no credit and who may have few options in an emergency situation other than to go to a title loan or a payday lender, and this affords those employees an option that is much more reasonable, similar to a credit card interest rate, and something that would otherwise, or in a situation where they otherwise may have to go to a more predatory practice.
Thank you. Did you have a question?
So I understand that this is a service. What other service industry or other companies did we look at that provides this type of service, if any?
Sorry. Sorry, my microphone wasn't working. Councilwomen, we used a service called Sourcewell, which is a competitive bidding process that we are a member of, that did a RFP process. They went out to financial institutions who offer this service, and this was the selected vendor. It was the only vendor that they selected, and they were selected based on their ability to provide FDIC insured loans and to provide competitive interest rates and to offer loans without a credit check, which is what this vendor provides. The other vendors that do offer this, we are aware of a few others, and this is an emerging market in the financial industry. It is not something that is widely offered, but it is something that's being offered to meet a need, which is that there are many individuals in our community and many within our employee base who have a need for a reasonably priced loan for emergency situations. There was a recent Federal Reserve study that came out that indicated that 40% of adults cannot manage a $400 or more emergency expense, and we have employees in our organization that fit that description, and we want to make sure that they have resources that don't point them toward title loans or payday loans.
Any further questions? Comments? Roll call.
DeCecio? DeCecio?
No.
No.
Guevara? Mendoza?
Yes.
Pastor? Stark? Waring? Williams.
Yes. Item 56?
Move to approve item 56.
Okay.
Okay, we do have one card. We have a motion to approve. Walter Gray?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just want to raise a question of, is there a net reduction? I'm questioning 56 and 57. Is there a net reduction in workforce development funds?
Do we have staff that can answer that?
Mayor, yes. Our Human Services Director, Michelle Franklin, and Deputy City Manager, Deanna Johnovich, are here.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. To his question, there is not a net reduction in the contract. This was at the request of the state that we enter into a new five-year contract, so this is simply backing out 13 million from the existing contract and entering into a new contract. So there is no net reduction to the amount for the city.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Roll call.
DeCecio?
Yeah.
Guevara? Mendoza?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Williams.
Yes, unanimous. Item 57?
Approve item 57.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Roll call.
DeCecio?
Yes.
Guevara? Mendoza?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Williams.
Yes, unanimous.
Move to approve item 60.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Do we have any comments? Councilman DeCecio?
Is it, this is the
Bioscience.
I'm sorry, what?
The Bioscience Healthcare Strategic Initiative.
That's correct. Not yet. No.
Okay. Roll call.
DeCecio?
No.
Guevara? Mendoza?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Williams.
Yes. It's seven to one?
Six.
Six and one? Oh, that's right, Michael's not here. Item 64?
Move to approve item 64.
Second.
Leonard Clark, would you like to come up and speak to this?
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. I was just wondering if this is, it sounds like it's pertaining only to overtime, but I don't want you to go in depth, because that's my fault. I didn't do my homework, except that I hope that, because this mentions body cameras, that we're continuing to try to implement those to protect not only officers but the community. So thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Any other comments? Roll call. Oh, sorry.
One thing. So this is, this is grant money, not general fund money.
Correct.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
DeCecio?
Yeah.
Guevara? Mendoza? Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Williams.
Yes, unanimous. Item 68?
I'd like to move item 68.
Have a motion and a second. Do we have any cards? No? Okay. Did you want to make a comment? Okay. Roll call, please.
DeCecio?
Yeah.
Guevara? Mendoza?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
No.
Williams.
Yes. Six to one? Next item? Is 66.
Item 69.
Yeah.
Second.
Do we have any cards? Oh, that's right. Oh, I didn't say that.
Mayor, item 69 is ordinance G6503, an ordinance amending Chapter 36, Vehicles and Traffic, Article 12, Section 36-158, Schedule 1 of the Phoenix City Code relating to local speed limits.
Does anyone have any comments? Very none? Roll call.
DeCecio?
Yeah.
Guevara? Mendoza? Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
No.
Williams.
Yes. Six to one. Next item? Item 70, I believe.
Move to approve item 70.
We have a
Mayor?
Councilman? Yes.
I'm going to see if we can continue this until the first week of October, and there's a reason for this. George Garcia, which some of us know, he owns Miracle Mile, has been in a battle with some of the cell providers. Now, we were promised multiple times that they were going to protect, and we were never going to see cases like this, and now we see them. I'd like to have staff take one more look at this ordinance and see if there's anything else we can do to protect the citizens of Phoenix and the taxpayers. See if there's any other language we can put in there, like to have one more look at this.
What would that date be? I'm asking staff.
We can do October 3, or what, you know.
October 3?
I'd say another week would be fine.
Okay.
Even next week.
And we have the motion amended to do that?
Second.
Mayor, we can prepare a report for the October 3 meeting at the councilman's request, yes.
This is continuing until October 3? Roll call.
DeCecio?
Yeah.
Guevara? Mendoza? Pastor? Stark? Williams?
Yes, unanimous. Seventy-one?
Move to approve item seventy-one.
Second.
Councilman DeCiccio? This is all...
Sure. I'm sorry, go ahead, Mayor.
No, I was just going to say, this is also a small wireless facility.
Right. I should, I should have just added both of them together for the same, I'd like to see a continuance here until October third as well, Mayor. I should have done both at the same time, sorry.
Okay.
So move to continue item seventy-one until October third.
We have a second. Roll call. DeCiccio?
Yeah, Mayor, could, they also make sure that they brief Councilman Pastor and Noah Kowski, who are involved in this issue, that we're all, the three of us are dealing with this one issue.
Yes, we will brief all the council. Thank you.
Yes, since I was the one who helped craft this.
Yeah, everyone agrees that will happen, so...
Guevara? Mendoza? Pastor? Stark? Waring?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Move to approve item seventy-five.
Second.
Okay, we have seventy-five and seventy-six. That's what I'm saying, we can, yes.
Can I change my motion to seventy-five and seventy-six? Thank you.
Second.
And seventy-six as corrected, is that right?
Yes.
Make sure.
Leonard Clark?
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers, for letting me speak. My name is Leonard Clark. I'm a resident of Phoenix, and I support this, I strongly support this. This is one of those things that, like when I was a kid, we would talk about the people, the leaders who had been here many, many years before, you know, like Teddy Roosevelt and other leaders, thinking of the future because of water, because we live in this desert. So ever since you've done this, and I believe in 2015, I believe I was here and supported it with Tucson, this is one of those things where a legacy decision, because people will look back, you're like those so-called people looking into the future here. You're going to be the forefathers and the foremothers who did something smart, because I'm not trying to scare people here, I know you don't want to hear this, but, you know, it's not looking good with Lake Mead, Lake Powell, we have global climate change, you know, with respect to my friends who disagree. So, that's smart. As also with water conservation, I believe that's seventy-six, I'm not sure how much money you're spending on it, so, but we really, really need to start emphasizing saving our water. So I'm, we're heading into some dangerous times here. I hope things get better, and we want to keep Phoenix livable. So what you're doing is a legacy decision. I just hope some politicians at the state legislature don't pass some law five, ten years from now, like what happened with the Sierra Vista decision for the hundred-year guarantee of water, because this is what we need. Legacy thinking, and not a group of politicians up at the legislature messing around with Phoenix's future. Thank you.
Thank you. Lydia Dutton?
Respecting the City Council Members-in-Chair, as a resident of Phoenix, interested in quality of life and environment, regional economy, and state conservation plans, I stand to address you today with a focus on the current planning initiatives and agenda of the City Council for water resource provisions for current and future populations. I would like to request and support the most responsible process of agreement on planning for these purposes. Recent opportunities for mutual involvement with resource planning and research have been announced by federal departments that prioritize water resources as well, together with the forwarding of new opportunities for education and government relations. This is relevant to the city's agenda, but carries somewhat separate process from the agenda on the schedule today. Opportunities for research and improvement of water resources for the study of local climate and atmospheric conditions might be provided to the city and local governments through programs and plans of action in 2019 and 2020. Federal departments' funding for prioritization of water resources and atmospheric concerns would rely on a research collaborative for climate, land, and water studies, as well as studies of hydrology systems. Key practices that prevent air and atmospheric disturbance, shortage of drinking water, heat and climate effects that degrade environment or result in a difficult economy are subjects for competitive awards granted to local governments. The National Climate Program Office, its committees or councils, under mutual or shared goals to provide for the needs of communities and populations, would strive to implement best practices and measures, understand critical environmental process, and prevent risks associated with extreme conditions or degradation. Applied research is intended to support or improve conservation and policy, create more efficient and effective process goals. Education and technology that follow on research could include engagement with city and regional government through policy institutes, the Climate Program Office, and community initiatives that build understanding of heritage and values in the state of Arizona.
Thank you very much.
I ask that you consider federal opportunity numbers and guidelines for water renewability, air and atmosphere concerns in Phoenix, and thank you for this opportunity to address it.
Thank you very much. Any other questions?
I have questions on item seventy-six regarding the water conservation outreach and the $3 million that will go to this outreach program. So my understanding is that we have had a conservation outreach program, at least I have been told that several times in my career sitting on council.
Yes, Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, that is correct. We have an entire section within our department that handles our water conservation, education, and outreach. We also partner regionally through the Association of, or the Arizona Municipal Water Users Association, Water Use It Wisely campaign. What we're looking at here is really increasing those efforts, and in particular, some of the media outreach, which tends to be a little bit more expensive than the avenues we've pursued previously. But we feel that this is necessary to respond to conditions on the Colorado River.
And are we partnering up with anybody else in this, in this, this state, or, and if we are, I would like to know how much they're contributing to this campaign?
Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, so through Water Use It Wisely, the other cities continue to contribute to that campaign, and I know the Arizona Department of Water Resources is also increasing its financial contribution to Water Use It Wisely. But to be clear, this campaign will be based on Water Use It Wisely, but will also have its own unique Phoenix element, including some additional bilingual outreach as well.
Okay, so do we have a number, or, I'm, I'm just curious, only because I always feel like the city is taking the lead in the water conservation area, and we're always taking the brunt of, of, of moving our dollars forward in, in the conservation. And I believe that conservation is citywide, other cities, other than us, and, and I would like to see them investing the same way we're investing in these type of outreach and conservation. And, and, and I think other cities rely on us, I think it's very similar to the homeless situation, where other cities rely on us to take the lead and pay for it. And so, this is where I struggle with something like this, because we are paying, I believe, $3 million, or we're investing $3 million in this campaign, and I would like to know the investment in the other groups or cities that are a part of this. And that's why I'm asking the questions.
Sure. Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, I apologize, I do not have the other cities' direct financial contribution into Water Use It Wisely here today. I'm happy to get that to you. But you're correct, Phoenix is out ahead as usual. We are pushing this because of the importance of the issue. But again, although this will be based on Water Use It Wisely, it will also have its own unique Phoenix brand, so that our customers are clear that this is a Phoenix campaign. I do expect that other cities will also increase their financial contribution for the same reasons. I just, I am not aware of where they are in that process at this time, but you're correct. Once again, we're out in front.
And when you say Water Use It Wisely, who is the collaboration? I didn't, I got Arizona Municipal...
Sorry, Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, that's the Arizona Municipal Water Users Association. Mayor Williams serves on that board for us. That is the city of Phoenix, the city of Scottsdale, Glendale, Peoria, Mesa, Chandler, Gilbert, Tempe, I'm, Goodyear. I'm probably missing, Avondale? No, I'm sorry, I'm probably missing one.
So it's a, it's a collective of cities and other cities, I would say Mesa's probably as big as us, that I would like to see them contributing as much as us, or maybe, maybe we look at how much the campaign is, and we divvy it up between the bigger cities, and smaller cities will, will have a smaller amount, I guess. The other question is, my understanding is, and you can correct me if I'm wrong also, is when we go into a conservation outreach type of thing, because I do believe in the conservation of water, in that process, we're educating our constituents about ways of conserving. And when our constituents start to begin to conserve and begin to put the methods that are in place to conserve, then that means that we're saving more water, so then our water bill is not as high as, as previously. So when the water bill is not as high, that means we're not generating the revenue that we anticipate. So, to me, it's a push-pull me, which I think we're hearing, we need to conserve, we need to do these things, but yet, when we do that, we're conserving, and then it becomes a balance of, of the whole revenue piece, and it, it becomes a whole thing of, we're not generating enough revenue. As I saw in Sunday's square off, we're not, we're asking in the future, or it's going to be coming up, for a rate hike. So, I think these are all dynamics that we need to understand, and the community to understand, on when we do these balances, or we do these campaigns, what the domino effect's going to be in the future.
Yeah, Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, no, you're absolutely correct, and that is a conundrum for water utilities across the country. The more that people conserve, the less that we make in revenue. We sell water, that's, that's correct. It's a careful balance, it is one that we have been challenged with for many years. We have practiced integrated supply and demand management planning, which means we're looking at what our demands are, and we're looking at what our supplies are, and we've been doing that for decades. And as you know, our conservation has been successful, and our water rate consumption has declined thirty percent in the last twenty years. Absolutely, that does factor into our financial picture, but it also helps us on infrastructure and the sizing of our infrastructure, and so there are some positive aspects to water conservation in terms of costs. That is, it is a careful balance that we have to create for our customers, absolutely, and it's a difficult one. But you're absolutely correct.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, so Catherine, you just hit on something that I was going to ask you about. I assume the less you use the pipes, the less you have to replace them, is that a fair? Oh, it's not?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, actually, no, it's, it's not. We have, the water's under pressure, so, and we have to maintain those pressures no matter how much water is used, and the size of the pipes themselves actually relate more to the size we need to get adequate fire flows than to meet each individual house's demand over time. But where it does save us, potentially save us money, is in the need to expand major infrastructure, like surface water treatment plants, for example. So, it, it's not necessarily in the pipes, it's, it's in different infrastructure that we can see those savings.
I shouldn't have limited myself to pipes, I meant that, to broad stuff. Okay, so, because I was like, that seemed to fly in the face of what you just said, but I get it now. So we're using a city that's 400,000 people bigger than 20 years ago, is using the same amount of water as 20 years ago, so that's, that's good, I'm sure it could be better, but that's good. Do you know how much of that is from conservation, and how much of that is from, we've switched agriculture, which by and large uses more water than people? Do you, do you have a breakdown on that?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, no, I, I would say that's predominantly conservation. We've just, we've seen our consumption rates decline over time, people have kind of embraced a desert mentality and wise water use. Lots have become smaller in size, appliances are more efficient. It's predominantly conservation that is driving that. I do want to mention, though, in terms of costs and planning for the future, one of the things that we need to keep in mind is that if it weren't for the conservation that we have achieved to date, we would already be not only using, but outstripping our available Colorado River supplies. So yes, there is an impact on revenue, but there's also a positive impact for us in terms of infrastructure and water resource planning. It is a very careful balance, and I appreciate your questions in that regard. It's important for the public to understand that.
You know, I voted against the recycle plan we had a couple of years ago, because I thought it was, I could be nice, but irredeemably stupid, and now we canceled that plan and so forth. But this is not something to mess around with, first of all. And second, I think you have at least a 20-year and probably longer track record, but I think you've only given me the data, at least me, the data for the, the last 20 years. Clearly, what's been done in the last 20 years is working pretty dramatically. Maybe not as much to get us out of a potential crisis situation, but it has pushed back the date we're going to arrive at a crisis situation, if we're not sadly already there already. So, I, I would say, you know, this is $3 million or what have you. Normally, this might be the kind of thing I might look at a little askance, but I do think we have to try. This isn't anything to be messed around with, number one, and the other stuff's important, but this is literally life or death. At some point, what ratepayers pay is going to be immaterial, if there's no water to pump to them, then we're all going to be moving somewhere else, so that's not good for anybody. So, I certainly hope that you've done every bit of research possible to find the best program and everything. I accept that that's, that's happened, and it'll be more of a success than the recycling program was, which just on its face, I didn't think made a lot of sense. But I also hope you continue all the things that have been done in the past, and continue to innovate as much as possible, because that has made a huge difference. We'd be having a much different discussion, to your point, if, if we hadn't have done that before. So I do applaud, you know, you and your predecessors for making that happen, and, you know, continue to try to go down that bent, so that's why I'll be voting yes for this today.
Are there any other questions?
I have three more questions.
Mayor?
Oh, Councilman DeCiccio?
Thank you, Mayor. I think this has been an interesting discussion, I mean, we can go more into it, too. I think that people always scratch their head that the relationship between conservation and higher rates, they always think it's the exact opposite, when in fact, the more you conserve, the more it costs, because you still got to pay your debt service, everything becomes more expensive. But it is, I, I like this proposal a lot. The question I've got for Catherine, and it's just one I just thought of, too, since, and it goes along with Councilwoman Pastor was talking about, too, when you do conservation methods like this, and you work hard at it, we, does it affect our allotment that we get from the CAP? I mean, so let's say we save a million acre feet of water, or five, or 10 million acre feet of water per year, whatever that amount is, in addition, from our starting point, does this insurance, you know, dibs on that water in the future, or, let's say Mesa doesn't do anything, and they continue to use their water?
Mayor, Councilmember DeCiccio, so it really doesn't affect our allocation of Colorado River supplies. What it, what it has done is put us in a position where we are able to live within that allocation, rather than outstripping it and needing to go out and, and find additional resources. But no, our allocation is our allocation. Of, of our allocation, our Colorado River allocation today, we use about two-thirds of it for the potable water distribution system, and then we bank about a third of it in local, and, in local aquifers and also in Tucson aquifers. So we use all of it in one form or another, but how much we conserve does not have bearing on our legal right to it, if that answers your question.
It does, sort of. I guess where I'm going on this, and you may want to think about it, it literally goes to the whole homeless issue, it goes into all of that, there's just a lack of an incentive base on, it's just not incentive-based the way it's set up like this. So we can do an exemplary job, which I believe that you are doing, in, in the conservation world, and another city might not. There are, you ought to be looking at, as you move forward on this stuff, more of an incentive-based model when you're dealing with the other cities, so that if we're doing more proportionately, or, you know, per population, we really ought to be looking at, if we're doing better than everyone else proportionally, then we ought to be getting some type of incentive out of that.
Mayor, Councilmember DeCiccio, yes, absolutely. So, it is just a fundamental flaw of Western water rights, that they are designed around a concept called... a concept called prior appropriation, which means use it or lose it. And you're right, that, that creates a disincentive for conservation. But that's why, for example, last year, we entered into the partnership with the Hilo River Indian Community for system conservation on the Colorado River. Those are new and innovative ways to overcome the disincentive for regional conservation, and that's the way of the future. You're absolutely correct. And the importance of that agreement, I think, wasn't setting those types of precedents for Phoenix and for the region.
Well, I don't think the prior appropriation model, or whatever it is you just talked about, the use it or lose it, deals with allocation of dollar, allocation amounts from the Colorado Desert. It does if we're dealing with other cities, it's part of the old CAP agreement, not the city's other state, but your prior appropriation dealt a lot with groundwater.
Councilmember DeCecio, no, use it or lose it applies to the Colorado River as well.
Right, but that, the Colorado River is a multi-state agreement.
Yes. I'm, I'm sorry, Councilmember DeCecio, perhaps I'm not understanding your question correctly, but no, so water that the city of Phoenix or other cities, Colorado River water that we do not use, gets turned back and is then made available to the next lowest priority water user on the system. And that, and you're right, that dis-
Commercial grade is A1.
Yeah, and that, that is a disincentive for conservation, yeah.
Right, no, that's what I'm trying to tell you too, I mean, amongst the cities that we, that we, we purchase our Colorado River from, we ought to be looking at, if we're saving an additional 5% or 3% per year, whatever that number turns out to be, you ought to create an incentive-based model in there, if you can do that. It doesn't necessarily, the prior appropriation, you can modify that, Catherine. You don't, I mean, it, you can modify that at, at a city level.
Yeah, okay, yes, thank you, Councilmember DeCecio.
Yeah, and I mean, if you got commercial-grade water, it's your A grade, and then everybody else falls in under, underneath that. Well, either way, I'm just telling you that I think you ought to take a look at that.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember, I'm happy to do that, and I, I can come visit with you on that.
All right, thank you. You bet.
Any other questions?
I have two more.
Okay.
My other question is, with this contract, is, are there metrics? Because just like Councilwoman Waring, I had some reservations about the recycling. And so in this whole process, are there metrics in making sure that they are doing what they say? And how is that built in?
Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, so there are contract requirements, but in terms of metrics, what we look at for water conservation is really a measure of gallons per capita per day usage. That's our, the best metric that we have today. It has its own flaws, but that's the best metric we have today, and that's what we track over time to see how well our conservation efforts are working. I, I do want to qualify though, however, that our gallons per capita per day water usage can vary independent of conservation efforts, depending on the weather. So for example, in a year where it rains a lot, and, and we love that, obviously, our gallons per capita per day water usage goes down. And conversely, in a year where it is even hotter and drier than usual here in Phoenix, it can go back up. So I want to qualify that a little bit, but we, we do use gallons per capita per day as our metric for measuring the success of these programs.
And the last question is, where's the source of revenue coming from?
This is coming out of our enterprise funds within the water utility.
Anyone else? Bearing none, roll call, please.
DeCecio?
Yeah.
Guevara? Mendoza? Pastor?
Yes.
Stark? Waring?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes. Please, the next item is-
To approve item 77?
Second.
Don't have that one marked. Leonard Clark? Lady left. Any comments, questions? Roll call?
DeCecio?
Yes.
Guevara? Mendoza? Pastor?
Yes.
Stark? Waring? Williams?
Yes. unanimous. Item 87, I think we need a staff presentation.
Mayor, I'd just like to put a, do we have any cards on it, Mayor?
No, we don't.
So I'd like to just go ahead and put a motion on the table.
Do I have to hold a public hearing first?
Okay, go ahead.
We have no one in the audience. Can you do a very brief what this is, and I can open the meeting?
Absolutely, Mayor, members of council. Item 87 is a request to abandon an alley at 5102 East Roma Avenue. This particular appeal abuts four houses, was approved by the abandonment hearing officer, subject to stipulations. It was appealed by one of the property owners who abuts it, not because he objected to the actual abandonment of the alley, but he's concerned about being able to acquire a portion of that once it's abandoned. And that really is a private matter between the two parties that they will have to resolve in court. Staff does recommend approval pursuant to the abandonment hearing officer and subject to those stipulations. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
I'm going to open the public hearing. Is there anyone here that wants to speak on this? Saying no one, I will close the public hearing. May I have a motion, please?
I'll put a motion out, Mayor. One, I'd like you to start off, I do, you know, with both the neighbors that were there, I mean, they're just incredibly nice people, and they're all trying to do the right thing. This is about one of the harder cases. I mean, we all talk about zoning cases, but this is a very difficult case. It wasn't an easy one at all. And it deals with who's entitled to the land in, in an alleyway when we do the abandonment. And, you know, these cases are not always, you know, on the same path. There are, there are different ones out there. As a normal rule, most property owners own halfway up to, you know, the midpoint, which is your sewer line generally, in the middle of an alley. And they each own it. In this case here, through our title work and our search, you know, one property owned it all. But it was just very difficult because of the impact it had on other neighbors in the area. So I'm going to put a motion to approve the abandonment subject to the compliance with the stipulations, and one additional stipulation that reads "follow." The applicant shall submit proof that the following property owner was notified at least 15 days prior to the scheduled final city council administrative action to abandon the public's interest in the alleyway pursuant to the city council action. And the individual's name is Michael Shields, 5105 East Lafayette Boulevard, Phoenix, Arizona, 85018. Thank you, Mayor.
Second. Do we have any cards? We do not. Any other comments, questions? Roll call.
DeCecio?
Yeah.
Guevara? Mendoza? Pastor? Stark? Waring? Williams?
Yes, thank you. Next on our agenda is citizen comments. Do we have any cards for that? Bearing none? Adjourned.